Good evening. This is the Wednesday, October eighth, two thousand and twenty five work session of the Marlington Local School District Board of Education. Call the roll, please.
Josh Hagan here. Karen Humphries.
Here.
Kathy Krupko.
Here.
Mark Ryan.
Here.
Jonathan Swift.
Here.
Thank you. Let's adopt the meeting agendas or motion to adopt this agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Okay. Financial forecast discussion.
Okay. I would like to welcome Ryan Gazoni tonight, who has helped prepare the forecast. And we're looking forward to anything you could share with us, Ryan, to give us a sense of where we think we're headed with the forecast.
Sounds good. Let me go and share my screen. See the screen, are you?
Yes. That's better.
That's good.
That look good?
Yep.
All right. Thanks for, thanks for having me. Here, earlier than normal, new filing deadline has been forecasted to October fifteenth, rather than the end of November, and then be back much earlier in the year in February, and that's the requirement to spring rather than the typical May filing. Last time we met, were some uncertainties around potential changes in property tax law, as well as the legislators still working on the new final budget. Good news is, is that the final budget passed. There were some changes afterwards with legislative vetoes of, by the governor, and then a veto override, a one set of legislation. There's expected to be a couple more veto overrides potentially in the next couple of weeks. And there's still a number of policies that have been introduced in both the House and the Senate that could have some substantial impact on school districts. That we're still, still waiting to see if those make it through, become law, and what the overall impact of those are. So this forecast is based on current law, current tax law, current state school funding law. And so the district right now, we are looking at this in two thousand and twenty six, bringing in about twenty eight million dollars in revenue, and slightly under that in expenses. So right now, you're projected on having an operating surplus of three hundred and forty eight thousand dollars, with ending cash balances here of six million five hundred and seventy eight thousand. The good news is, is that the district has, once again this year, had a balanced budget. So I started working with district quite some time ago. The district does not have a balanced budget, has declining cash balance. You guys have about six point five million dollars projected in cash in the year, and then start deficit spending the next year. So you've moved away from deficit spending this year, pushed it into next year. Half million dollars is not significant at this point. So hopefully we'll overcome that for next year, and then you start deficit spending a little more as we move out. Some of the things in here that I'll go over that we want to, we look at revenue, what could change, what is changing there. You guys are a guaranteed district, meaning the most that you can get is what you received in two thousand and twenty. That is the guarantee in the current funding formula. There's no real sign, based off of current law, or on your district's enrollment, that you have any chance of getting off the guarantee. So without, besides that, there's a small twenty seven dollar per student, per funding supplement issue that you'll get.
Ryan, don't you mean we're getting the least amount that we can, not the most we can, because we're at the twenty mil floor? That's the least allowable by law?
Yeah, I guess, let me show you an example. It's in, under law, they do this entire calculation, many steps, right? And what happens is, is we get to right here, line R. So based off the funding formula, this year, if there was no guarantee in place, you get six million two hundred thousand dollars. But in two thousand and twenty, you got nine million one hundred thousand. So as a result, they're giving you an additional two million eight hundred ninety two thousand.
So that's the state, that's the state's portion, right?
No, you're getting this entire nine million. They're saying, should, if line R one was not in law, that's a guarantee, you would drop down almost three million dollars in funding.
Okay.
They're, they're guaranteeing for you that amount. Then there's also another guarantee you come down. They throw in transportation funding, and then the twenty one guarantee, and you're on the twenty one guarantee by additional two hundred and sixty two thousand. So a little confusing, but there's two guarantees in place that guarantee that amount of funding that you're going to get, based on the funding formula.
Okay.
And then for your district on line P here, you get about additional forty eight thousand dollars this year, and sixty nine thousand dollars next year because of hurt people something was in place. That is not part of the guaranteed funding, so that's on top of that guarantee, of this additional funding issue that wasn't necessarily in place previously. So the, the good news to the district is, you know what your funding is going to be, based off these guarantees. The bad news is, if they take those guarantees away, there is quite a bit that you could fall to where the funding formula is covering you should be. Just as a reminder, under the, the governor's proposed budget, there was a five percent and ten percent reduction in the state funding formula for guaranteed districts. That did not make it into the House, or the, the House already had twenty five guarantee. That did not make it into the Senate or, or, or current law. So it maintained, based in the formula, but keeping those guarantees in place for you. So from there, you know, this, this is your unrestricted state funding, here in, in green. In red, that's your restricted, that's for economic disadvantage, and then there's also some special ed funding that's restricted. So you guys have a lot of, of state funding, that there's not, there are any indication right now that you have any increases there in any kind of near future, based on the current funding law. As we move into this blue area here, you have had some increases because of changes in property values and being in the twenty mil floor. That has produced additional revenue for the district, and we're not anticipating any significant increases right now. Moving forward, next time we get to reappraisal, there's some slight increases in twenty eight, twenty nine is resolved, and next, if you try to update, we'll have to go through it. And then finally, you'll know what sticks out here, is this big orange piece in two thousand and twenty five, and why did you collect four point eight million then? Only two point nine million being projected in two thousand and twenty six. That is because of the pipeline settlement that you received, that's been going on for a period of time, and you got some back taxes paid, one-time money. So you got that, that source there. We, we have the depreciation of, of the pipeline moving forward. That's not the only thing in that orange line. You also have public, other public utilities, such as electric lines, and, and other gas lines besides the pipeline, that generate the revenue there. One thing to note, you will notice that's going down a little bit, because there is no reappraisal on public utility. It's just new construction, as a depreciation value. You could see those values go down. There also is one taxpayer, we believe, in north, northern Ohio, that has challenged their property values, because districts have typically, except for the pipeline, collected around a hundred percent. A lot of districts dropped ninety five percent this year. So we think that's because of tax complaints that, that could be taking place in the next coming years. And then the final thing is, any new growth on public utility, starting in twenty, tax year two thousand and twenty seven, did law change? Where that, the, the value of that property for anything new that public utility has reduced down to twenty five percent, looking at that stat. We've also included that in the forecast here, as a new law moving forward. Your, the good news is, is that for your, your real estate, you're coming about a hundred percent collection, right around there, gross collection, meaning dilutive plus parent collections. And so that's been a stable source of revenue for the district. Once we get past state funding, and your public utility and property taxes, what we can see here, other revenue, interest income, we're expecting to actually decline. I'm sorry, this is state share here of property taxes. So this is the state's portion of what they pay for property taxes for residential property owners. So other revenue here, you can see it's declining, and interest income is expected to decline, based off the, the interest rates market right now, and kind of cash balance. That's not the only thing in there. You also have several federal Medicaid reinforcements, that you're going to get to be, just say, a double settlement reinforcement this year, go back to a single one next year. And then you also have some tuition payments in there. Those are going to be for court placed, foster placed students, and then any special ed excess costs, which that you get. That mainly makes up the majority of your other revenue, and you can see that's declined in source.
Right.
The reason why I'm going to bring these in, is really, right now, under current law, the only increase in revenue you have, when we go through trial updates, which occurs during these two fiscal years here, besides that, you're pretty much flat funded going forward, with other revenues slightly decreasing.
I've got a question real quick, Ryan.
Sure.
On, on the tax for the public utilities, is that based on the effective millage or the twenty mil floor?
So for public utility, it is the only type of property value that is based off the full voted rate. Everything else, class one, class two, property values are based off of an effective rate, which can go down with the twenty mil floor, can't drop below it.
Yeah.
Public utility property is at your full voted rate, that was originally voted in by the voters.
So, so if we had levies passed that met the twenty mil floor without, you know, being brought up automatically, how much additional income would we receive from public utilities? Do you, do you have any idea what that would be?
You're, you're receiving the full amount. And what I mean by that is, if we look at this table here, for your class two, you can see, or your class one, you can see it's a twenty mil floor here. And you can see for class two, you're at twenty two point nine this year. But your public utility is at the full voted rate, so there is no reduction factor like there is for class one or class two. You collect fifty four point nine zil.
Nineteen ninety three, say you pass that eight point seven mil levy, then we're still getting eight point seven mils.
So it wouldn't make a difference if we had, what's the effective millage around, what is it, sixteen or eighteen percent?
It was like sixteen or seventeen.
So if, if our effective voted millage was at twenty, it wouldn't make a difference to that from the public utility tax?
No, they, they collect that full, whatever was voted in the ratio. So as an example.
That was my point with the renewal, like if, if the voters would vote a renewal down, their property tax would stay the same, but the, but the public utility effective would go down, so we would lose three or four percent.
Well, that's what I'm seeing. If we, if we had additional levies, though, to bring us up to the twenty mil floor, wouldn't that levy more taxes against the public utilities?
Yeah, they would also levy just against public utilities, but we would be the same as the twenty mil.
Well, that, that's what my question was, is how much additional revenue would that, if we, if we had effective voted millage, up to twenty mils?
So we could ask the question to John Oaks over at Stark County, he'd say, okay, let's just say our effective millage is, let's say sixteen percent. I don't know exactly what it is, but it's around there, or seventeen. And we said, we would like to have effective millage at twenty mils, which is what the, the state constitution kind of has us at.
Yeah.
He would say, you would need to put on a X mil levy.
Yeah.
So that would cost taxpayers X dollars on a hundred thousand dollar home, okay, the standard procedure, you know, or income tax, property tax, everyone would look at it. Then that would raise, based on what Ryan's saying, so we're at fifty four effect mils, based on all those levies. So that levy then would go up that, that, that much more. So you would get both. You would actually, yes. In theory, what you're saying is, the public utilities would actually go higher.
Well, that's what I was wondering, is there a way that if you passed a levy where it would increase that effective rate for the public utilities, but not for the homeowners, since we're already at the twenty mil floor?
Oh, so what you're saying is, can we pass a levy that would only affect the public utilities, but not our current taxpayer?
Yeah, since, since we're not, since we're collecting at twenty mils, you know, no matter what, and they're only affected by the effective millage, wouldn't it make sense that if it was?
And if you're thinking like I am, on theory, I'd say yes, but I would have to ask John Oaks specifically. I wouldn't want to say yes or no to that answer, but I could ask him. I could tell us, he would tell us, him and Angela Kinsley, the new auditor, can tell us exactly where our effective, where we are, based on the, the recent property tax evaluations. I think you're right, it's around sixteen, seventeen. We talked about that.
Yeah. I'd just be interested to know what, what that difference would be.
From a taxpayer standpoint?
No, no.
Either way, you're, you're saying they're paying anyway, so if we passed it.
Yeah, so if we passed it, the, yeah, the homeowner's taxes would remain the same, but it would increase revenue from public utilities.
Correct, but it wouldn't increase revenue on the homeowner.
That's, that's exactly what I'm saying.
It, it makes great sense. It'd be an interesting sell if we could get the taxpayers to say, hey, you're not, your property taxes are going to stay the same, but public utilities are going to pay the district more. That'd be good.
I'd just be interested to know what, what the amount would be from public utilities if we were, if we had levies passed and voted in to get us to the twenty mil four versus where we're at now.
Give me three or four days. That doesn't take him long. They're usually pretty good about it, especially when Bob and I ask the question.
Any, any other questions on, on the revenue piece? All right, I will move on to the expenditure piece. Financiers coming in close to where the forecast was in May. As you can see, your largest expenses is going to be salary benefits. And we do have slight increases here. The district did have some savings from producing some provisions and then getting some hiring, material with the hiring, for costing replacements for. In addition, we have your health insurance here. With health insurance, I believe this is part of the COG, you have, we continue to have your, your, we have holiday fill-in, and then also your premium increases this year, are basically what we have changing moving forward. When we get into purchase services, I will show you an example of that, what is making changes there. So the easiest way to provide this in a visual, when we talk about purchase services, there's, we break it down into main categories. So in the blue, you have contracted services. You actually are expecting a reduction this year in your contracted services. These are usually big professional services that you don't provide in house, that you get from either the ESC or other vendors that are out there, as well as legal fees, things like that. You are expecting a decrease this year, and then just modest increases based off of increases in inflation. As we go to the next one here, we are looking at repair costs. So this is maintenance repair cost plus property insurance, and just gradual increases there, nothing significant. You can see that trend, four hundred thousand in two thousand and twenty four. You're about four forty this year, and popping out, we're expecting around four sixty seven in two thousand and thirty. The next major one, we have communications, not necessarily major. This is going to be for your ITC, internet services, things like that, not a significant source. We do look at utilities, you have seen a spike in utilities, and we're continuing that moving forward. So you're up roughly ten percent, closer to ten percent from last year for this year. Not expecting as much of an increase moving forward, but do have some increases there. And then your second highest expense is going to be tuition. And we are expecting, based off of your data through the first three months, a slight decrease in outsourced tuition costs. These could be to product placement, these could be to, that you're paying for students that are residents of yours that are foster or court placed, and it could be for outside special education tuition as well. But it does look like you're going to have a slight decrease, which is a good thing, and then just inflationary costs moving forward. When we look at your next biggest non-salary benefit expense, is going to be supplies. And then supply breaking down the same way. Your largest expense is transportation costs that we can see up here. And based off of, just like once again, your first three months, we think that's going to fairly level, and then just minor increases there. Your next biggest one is going to be general supply, mainly classroom supplies. This could also include electronic subscriptions. The district did have a, part of your Chromebooks were paid out of there last year, and this year, not having that as part of, of the plan. So you do see a decrease in those costs here. And then we have the textbook costs, which you had a larger adoption in the last two years, bringing it down to about seventy two thousand, and then no major adoptions planned in twenty seven through thirty. And finally, the last one broadly is going to be your, your custodial maintenance supplies, which are, are pretty steady. No major changes anticipated there. Next, we come to capital outlay. There's not a whole lot there, a hundred and twenty five thousand, basically, majority of that is for buses budgeted. So not a substantial amount of dollars there. And then finally, we go to your other expenses. You'll notice other expenses are primarily in one category, and that is dues and fees. The vast majority of these dues and fees are county audit and treasury fees, so you don't have much control over those. It's based off of the property values, and collections as well as dilutive collections as well will increase in costs. So no, no major change. You did have the increase going from twenty four to twenty five, but no major changes moving forward there as well. So overall, with your expenses, you see some of your major purchase services come down. Supplies are pretty steady, actually some decreases there. No major changes in other expenses or in, in your capital outlay. And then your final one, one of the larger ones that you have here, is going to be your transfers out. That's going to be the next, the next, the last item we'll cover here. So obviously, you saw a much bigger transfer out in two thousand and twenty five, by transferring out. You got that one-time payment for the utility you transferred out as well. And then you can see what is being budgeted as far as transfers moving forward here. Pulling about one point eight million this year, dropping out at one point seven million moving forward. So with that, going back to our, our simplified statement here, based off, I keep on stressing, current law is, we are projecting that you'll start deficit spending next year. You push that, there was a small deficit, I believe, in the last forecast. This year, through some cost cutting measures by the district, which you guys have continued to do over the last, the past several years, you have a balanced budget projected for this year, and a slight operating deficit next year. And you can see that grows moving forward. What other questions can I answer for the board or the audience? Being a five-year forecast, I should point out, we are still producing a five-year forecast, but the legislators are only requiring now a budget year plus three. It's really a four-year forecast, but because of different, being able to illustrate long-term effects and cycles, we include the fifth year still in, in our presentation here. And you can see, you do have a renewal levy coming into play in two thousand and twenty nine. Would be the first time we didn't collect, we don't renew by that point. And then you can also see there that the district, as of right now, run through the cash balance, that deficit spending increases by twenty three.
So Ryan, I'm going to, I'm going to brief the board a little bit on it, but you can also verify, so it's like I'm speaking out. But obviously, we know that i- in any given time in the next few weeks, House Bill one eighty six could come to fruition, based on what I'm sure you're hearing and what I'm hearing. So, I mean, I'll just pass out a, something that I got, we got from, obviously, the Department of Education and Workforce, just from Marlington, which is kind of, so basically, what he's basically talking about right now, where we're at in under current fiscal law, which is good. We're under the guarantee, we're getting the twenty mil floor. Obviously, House Bill one eighty six wants to take us back to basically two thousand and twenty two levels, and basically retroactively go back and take our money back, and do that per year to catch up. So as you can see on the, if you look on the right-hand side, it's a little small. That's what we currently are at for Marlington, based on the Department of Education and workforce as estimated revenue coming in under current law. And then if how, Senate or sub, uh, Bill, House Bill one eighty six goes through, then you're going to look at, so if you look each year, two thousand and twenty, they're going to match, twenty one's going to match, twenty two's going to match. Then as soon as you get to twenty three, you're going to see that the difference between what actuals in law, and what, or twenty, I'm sorry, twenty four, you're going to see us, we're going to see a significant decline of our money taken from us. So you're looking at maybe five to six hundred thousand dollars a year, and that's not anything that Marlington did. This is coming from the legislators, and this is a very big push. They look like they have enough votes to go through, is what I'm told. So Ryan, you want to elaborate a little bit on that? Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, so on the screen, the blue line, your current forecast, your cash balance and your current forecast. The red line would be based off of the O R C estimates, with a perfect, the, the cause of this bill to have on, the impact on your district. The easiest way for you to explain what this bill is, is that if you're a person that got a raise two years ago, and you got a, a thirty percent raise, let's call it. And now, they're coming back and saying, you should not have gotten the thirty percent raise, you should have only gotten a nine percent raise. And so moving forward, we're going to reduce your pay by twenty one percent, and we're also going back and recollecting the money for the last two years with form of credit. For what we already paid you, starting in two thousand and twenty seven, we're going to, we're going to recoup, recoup that money from you. So that's why you see a little bit bigger of a drop here in twenty seven, because that's when they, they take that recruitment of the last two years, and they reduce your increase by being at the floor, down to what the rate of inflation was, which right now, we count it at around nine percent. So it's capping about increasing moving forward, plus retroactive going back and taking money from the district that you already collected, and already under current law, we're entitled to.
So I just, and I'll, you don't have to stay on for that, but I will brief them and answer any questions. I mean, obviously, you know, as, as we are a conservative district, and I understand that, and our legislators are conservative, but this is one where they, they have a lot of support for right now, and it's, we're advocating what it would look like for our own story, or our own district. And this isn't just a Marlington issue, this actually affects, I think, fifteen of the seventeen districts in Stark County.
actually affects, I think, fifteen of the seventeen districts in Stark County, with the exception of the ones that are not on the twenty mil floor. Okay, is really what it's doing. There's-
So they have more money and they're going to keep their money?
Correct. It's really, this is a way to offset, this is their idea of trying to make the property taxpayers a little happier by saying we're going to take this away from the schools. And it's not just the schools, it's, it's also affects your fire, your police. This will affect all our townships, you know, that we depend on, that have been voted in by taxpayers for support for roads, libraries, and all this. It isn't just a, you know, this, but this, I wanted to give you guys, at least from them, what they gave us that we, that I, that I asked for, you know, specifically, a group of us did. So what it looks like for us, I just asked Ryan if that's accurate. He said it is.
So we're, we're talking about, about how much per year, you're saying?
Uh, you see, you can do the math, just start the last line and go back and forth, and you can kind of figure, but you're looking at roughly five to six hundred thousand dollars a year. So it's, it adds up quickly.
And they're taking it back, but where's the money going?
Uh, in theory, Ryan, where's the money going? They would want to return it to the taxpayer, is that correct?
Yeah, so think of, you get your tax bill and it says how much you owe each year. Under this, based off the last two years, there's going to be a credit on your tax bill. So basically, you would, when you go to pay your taxes, you have a, let's call it discount for this year because of what you paid before. And under the new law would say, you're not, you weren't paid to before. So therefore, they would give a credit on their existing tax bill, starting, I think, for the next, not this tax year, following that year. And then moving forward, it would cap any additional growth based off of what the rate of inflation was the three previous years.
So, like, so when I met with Aaron Roush, which he's the chief in budget of school funding for the Department of Education and Workforce, like, his point is, to all districts, you know, obviously, but in particular, you know, when we, when him and I just talked about with Bob, just Marlington, you know, the part of this conversation is if, if House Bill one eighty-six goes through, you know, we have to be, the board has to start thinking about, you know, how we're going to continue to balance our budget based on the amount of property taxes we continue to transfer out. Not saying change anything, but the conversations have to be made publicly about what's right and wrong to balance our budget because it's not a Marlington issue. You know, we've cut staff every year through attrition, done those things, looked at that, looked at your purchase services, make things right. And Ryan would, you know, has backed that up with what we've done for the last four years. But at the same time, there's going to be, and I'm not saying this is just, right now, it's all pending, but the pending is a little bit more real based on what we're gathering from, what we're hearing from Columbus. So again, I'll still be advocating for our story, just as much as others are going to advocate for theirs. But we have to be, this is why we have a work session, is just to make you aware that those, these things are looming out there. There's many other pieces, but this, this is probably the biggest one, wouldn't you agree, Ryan?
This is the biggest one. There's, there's also a House Bill that amended, kind of replaced, House Bill three thirty-five, that where this is capping twenty mil floor districts increases at their, the average rate of inflation of the last three years. Three thirty-five would then, your inside millage would be capped at no more than one percent increase per year. So that's also a change, not insignificant as this from, from a standpoint of, of financial for you. But if you ever were to have to go back to taxpayers and pass a new levy, then the only thing that generates additional tax revenue for the district after you pass that is inside millage. That would be capped at that one percent per year, based on what it's written right now. So that also would prevent, I mean, your ability to increase revenue is, especially for Marlington, that the guaranteed district is significantly hampered with the changes in, in property tax law moving forward due to all they go through, to where basically, you know, as your expenses increase, you're going to have to either cut more each year or go on a levy cycle quicker. Because that's really the only way your district specifically can increase revenue without any other, you know, with this change, the one eighty-six, change to three thirty-five, it's really hampering anyway for you to keep up with inflation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah.
All right. If you guys have anything else, let me know.
Will do.
Thank you.
Talk to you tomorrow.
Thanks, Ryan.
Oh, I have also, I meant to give to you guys, I'm sorry, if you could. One, two, three, four, five, right? One, two, three, four, five. This is just last year's, this was May's forecast. Just from a projection standpoint and what he talked about, we were, we were also projected last year to be at a balanced or above budget of only five thousand four hundred thirteen dollars. So we are about two or three hundred thousand dollars higher than that, based on what he said, but we were either way. That's the general. The big one was the following year, when we're looking at our, you know, over-under on our, our deficit spending for that. And I asked Bob to put this together, and he could explain it a little bit too, since we're talking about deficit spending. Obviously, I, I was asked, is Marlington deficit spending? And I said, on the forecast, yes. You know, it's, last year we were, the, the year before and that. That's really the general question that I was asked. And it's, it's accurate. You can look it up on our five-year forecast. But then again, I, I call it, you know, I said, and then I explained we're deficit spending because we're moving taxpayer money out of our operating budget to support what, what, building initiatives, which is all good. It's not a bad thing. It's what we, the intention is for. You know, by law, we can take taxpayer money, property taxes, and move it to a different fund, P I, oh seven oh, it doesn't really matter, to support your buildings. You can never take P I money and move it into operating. That's the law.
Right.
So what I had Bob kind of put together, here's one, two, three, four, five. You know, what I, the general way I do it, and we'll put in it, if it's not on the website, it might already be up, is basically, if we, in general, if we would just leave our property taxes alone, we are not deficit spending at all in the last four to five years. Okay? So I mean, the word is used like pipeline money. At the end of the day, it's, it's, you know, I talked to Aaron Roush, it's a tangible property, it's a property tax, doesn't matter. It all goes into one pot. We get X amount of dollars into that. The board years ago said, hey, can we take out a portion of that to maintain or upgrade or do things to our facilities, specifically our elementary or middle school and high school? All correct. That's what we've been doing for the last four years, between roofs, multiple paving projects, A C and H VAC concerns and so forth. And we're going to continue to do so in, in a fiscally responsible manner. That's kind of why we hold work sessions and hold, and talk about that. What I want to put together is, you know, and I call it half-truths. You know, just be truthful. You know, if you say you're deficit spending, then say yes, but you're not if you're not transferring money out. You know, it's, it's, it's very simple. It's a property tax. So yes, we are deficit spending based on what we take out of our own checking account, savings account. That's how you want to look at it.
So we could balance the budget if we didn't spend any money on buildings?
Correct. But that's not, that's not the initiative that we want as a board. We want to continue to maintain. It's just, we want to be clear that, you know, the reason why we are deficit spending is because we are making sure that we catch up and maintain a lot of our building initiatives that we've been doing for la, the last four years.
Right.
You know, the four million dollar roof project, the millions that we've spent on paving, you know, the continued upgrade of our fixing, you know, upgrading our H VAC in the auditorium, you know, the mini splits are consistent, uh, cost every year to, just to make sure they're maintained and up, which is all fine. You know, I'm not saying change anything. I just think it's, to make it clear, when somebody asks me, you know, is that I don't give a, a half-truth, I just give a full truth. We are not, as a board or as a district, deficit spending if we leave what's in there alone. We're choosing as a board to transfer out. The board is making that decision.
Yeah, I think to understand it all, there's a couple key points, and it probably sounds like double speak in some ways when we talk about deficit spending. We are, we aren't, kind of thing. And here's the, here's the caveats to that. The five-year forecast is just the general fund, okay? And when we look at that five-year forecast, transfers out to the general fund are considered an expense. So if you look at the, the five-year forecast in our case, we're transferring out significant money to another fund. So if you look at just the five-year forecast, it's going to show deficit spending on line six point oh one oh because we have this transfer out. Now, we've been spending that money to maintain buildings. So if you take that, those two things together, are you deficit spending? I would say, yes, we are deficit spending. But if you looked at just the five-year forecast and you were to not transfer that money out and handle buildings with the building funds separately, if you will, and not, not have that transfer out, then we would not be deficit spending. So it's more that it just takes a little explaining to understand what Dan's saying here. So if you looked at it like just from an operational standpoint, imagine not transferring this pipeline money out. If we just used what is general fund money that comes in by taxes, including the pipeline revenue, we would not be deficit spending. So you could complicate that further by say, well, wouldn't you be spending money on maintaining buildings out of there, out of the general fund? Well, yes, and we'd probably be deficit spending. However, right now, by moving those monies to P I, and that's the only place that can be spent, and we have building needs, like we did the two phases of the roof this year instead of one, well, we're going to spend all that's there, that's required to meet our, our budget for the year, because it's already been reserved for that. We can't spend it on other expenses. So I hope that's not speaking too much, but I wanted to just kind of clarify what, what the difference here is that we're talking about. It's just general fund when we look at the forecast, and it has one big expense in, in taking these transfers out, as directed by the board. So as we look at, I think what Mr. Swisher's probably getting at, and Ryan, I think, alluded to it too, is as we see the diff, as the district heading into deficit spending in future years, then I think the discussion has to be there to say, well, you can't have negative cash. You have to stay afloat as a, as a financial organization. Can you continue to transfer that money out if there's no other revenue coming in to offset the inflationary expenses and things, and needs that we have? So that'll be a discussion for the board in the future.
When I, when I explained it that way, what I was talking about, the, the community members I talked to said, oh, that makes a lot more sense. They don't mind it as much because you, we are targeting specific things within our buildings, continuing to make things look better and making it better for our kids and our staff. So that makes a lot more sense, you know, so when you're saying that. So it's not that, I'm saying, let's change something. I just wanted to be clear that based on the thirty-plus cuts we've had in the last three and a half years from classified and certified, and the fact that, you know, we're transferring money out, we're doing pretty good. And with what we've done to maintain buildings is pretty remarkable.
Right. So are we at a point where we need to have that discussion in the future?
No. I, I, I think the only time we would get to that point is if something like a House Bill one eighty-six would go through.
Okay.
And then you're talking, as a board, you're going to have to have a public discussion of how we're going to continue to operate in the black after looking at everything else as possible too, and any questions. So no, I don't think, I think we're continuing fine with what we're doing. It's just-
The other question I have is, once the roof projects are done, do we need all four million in the P I?
There's not four million. That was a one-time-
That was, I know it was a one-time thing, but what I'm saying is, we, w- w- once the roofs are done, which is the big, single biggest expense we've had, is, are, do the expenses come down? What other large expenses do we have?
So we still have about an eight hundred-plus thousand dollar loan, loan that we're still paying on the bank through two thousand twenty-seven. Okay, so we got, we still have that.
Well, what do we pay on that a year, though?
Hey, exactly what it is. I think there's two years left, I think, this year. I think two thousand twenty-seven is when that loan is up.
Is that one payment a year, two payments a year?
Two. Two payments a year.
And what's the amount?
Uh, I'm going to say between eight and nine hundred thousand. I want to say like eight hundred and eighty-seven.
Now, does that come out of P I or does that come out of operating?
It, it, it comes out of operating technically. That's our op, you know, because we're, it comes from the transfers out. I mean, at the end of the day, it comes out of operating money.
Well, actually, that one, if it's, if it's the payment for the upgrade projects to the elementaries that were done that we're speaking about, then-
It's coming from the transfer out.
It's coming from the-
We've paid that a couple of different places in the past.
Okay.
You know, however, I think I have it set up to be paid out of, it's either P I or capital projects fund. I'm going to check right now this year.
Was it changed at one point because of the COVID money?
Well, it really, at the end of the day-
It's more like a treasure choice in a way, in the sense that, you know, as I look at what, we're going to write a purchase order against for P I versus the capital projects fund, they can be used for similar reasons.
To answer your question, to me, no. I don't, I think the only time the discussion would come into play is if House Bill one eighty-six would pass, or if you're getting enough feedback from the community saying, hey, I want you to operate in the black. You know, well, if you need to operate in the black and you've done what you could on a cut standpoint as much without affecting the educational point, then you may have to look at portions of it to make sure you're operating in the black. Again, it's more of a, a board decision. And then obviously, we still have major needs. No, I don't want to say major needs. We still want to make sure, like I said, I said, it took me five, it would take me five years to get to where I thought we'd get caught up. All right? You know, I still think we have some paving needs at the elementaries that, to finalize. I mean, we did the Balka Marlboro, we got one thing left. We still have the Balko Washington done. We have one thing left. And we have Lexington, I have one small left. I mean, those, that's, that I can think off the top of my head. I do want to make sure that I, you know, obviously, I didn't leave out my thing that I want to talk, you know, anything else you guys had to come up with from, you know, major, there's still H VAC for our high school gym. I want to look at, you know, from that aspect of it, because that's the last piece that's not, you know, there from an H VAC heating standpoint. Athletically, I, I, I want to make sure that we're, you know, we haven't really touched anything athletically since I've been here. So it's really just getting an idea in the next few years of needs. You know, the middle school floor at, over there has been there since I was in middle school. It's pretty much shot. It's very, a lot of hollow spots. I think that is a conversation. I don't think it's a huge need, like a cost, but it's still, we need to get some estimates. And Mall and Center floor's been there since inception. That thing's been an amazing floor and used. And then I got to look at, you know, based on our strategic plan, there's other things in there that I want to make sure that we looked at as priorities. So, no, I-
I can't think of anything in magnitude anywhere close to the high school roof.
There's nothing, yeah. I don't think there's anything like that.
It's going to be less.
But again, it would be all open to a board discussion. Like, I think I put in my update Friday, I'm hoping to have by December some, a list and some quotes and numbers for you, then, you know, so we can have maybe a work session, like we always do about buildings and grounds, and just kind of, you know, say, hey, here's the pot of money potentially we have to spend based on the forecast, and, you know, which items do you want to target or not target? And then we can go forward.
Josh, that bond payment, it's going to come out this year, seven hundred seven thousand, seven hundred seventy, or seven hundred seven dollars. So that'll be coming out the latter part of this fiscal year.
That's the two payments combined or two payments?
Two payments combined.
Say that again, Bob.
About seven hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Per year?
Yeah.
Seven eighty?
Seven hundred and eight.
Yeah.
With rounding.
So we're close. Like I said, two thousand twenty-seven, we become debt-free. That's really, that helps also.
So it's roughly, so it's roughly what, one point six is owed? Is that what you're saying?
What was that? I'm sorry.
You said seven hundred and eighty thousand.
Seven hundred and eight thousand.
Seven hundred and eight thousand. Is that what's owed or that's what we're paying?
No, that's what we're paying each year. So I think we have three years, this year twenty-five, twenty-six, and maybe all twenty-seven. So we're probably looking at about two-point-one million, you know, left on that. Yep.
I think it's a good point, Dan, that you brought up, you know, what we're doing here is a reflection of what the community wants. You know, there's, you, they want their buildings.
Correct.
We're, we're not going to get new levy money passed to put new buildings up. So we're maintaining what we have. We're keep, we're keeping it upgraded. We're doing the air conditioning. We're doing everything that the community wants. So explaining it that way is, is, is perfect in my mind. Yeah, we're deficit spending, but at the same time, we got buildings that are viable for another ten, fifteen years at least.
Longer or longer?
And to be clear, so if that money, I'm just going, if, for the discussion, or if we get to the discussion about transferring money out, when the money comes in in general fund, if we need to use it to pay for repairs or things, I just want to underline this, we can.
Well, you always can. Currently, not the way it's designed right now.
Okay. The way it's designed right now, you can. Okay. But if you put that money into, or if you transfer it out, it cannot be used for anything but those-
No. So currently, the way it's, the, currently, the way we transfer out, it could be transferred back in if we chose to.
Okay.
Under a board resolution.
Okay.
If you would, what you can't do, you cannot transfer P I money that's passed, so levy money, permanent improvement money, and then try to transfer that in for operational money.
Okay.
That's illegal, which you cannot do.
Okay.
Two questions.
Two questions. In the, in the forecast, is the, when the loan is paid off, is that already worked into the forecast?
No, it's not actually in our forecast because we transfer, it's being paid out of our transfers out. So it doesn't, it's not, it's already out anyway. So it's just...
And that's called the capital outlays account? Is that what, is that what you're calling it?
Capital projects.
Capital projects, which is separate from the PI. So we got a PI, we got a capital project. Two different...
Let's just say the loan was...
PI one gets funded by, by tax revenue, like the property taxes, the pipeline money, et cetera. There's a portion of it based on the mileage that we have, like in the PI levy that goes into that fund directly.
So when those loans are paid off, will the...
Let's just say we paid it off this year. No, not necessarily.
Okay.
No, not at all.
That's my question.
So if the loan was paid off this year, and we're saying, as he showed, we're transferring out 1.7 million in tangible property tax this year, the board could say, hey, I only want to transfer out a million, or I only want to transfer out 700,000 instead of it all. The board has that right to say, hey, I still want to be able to transfer out X amount of dollars because obviously we want to continue with specific initiatives that we want to target or attack, or they could, but we also want to say we don't need that much. So we're going to keep it into the operating expenses where it belongs, just to make sure that we're staying on a balanced budget. So we don't have to go back to the taxpayers and ask for any money.
The only problem hypothetically doing, if we're going to reserve that money to try to keep the budget balanced, since we have increasing expense, expenses every year, and then the nexus money that we're getting is decreasing every year, eventually, we're going to hit a point where we can't do that.
You are. In 30 years, you are correct. 30 years. You are right. So...
But a little every year, and I...
You know, I mean, in the next 10 to, in the next 10 to, 10 to 15 years, I'm in a pretty, pretty safe assumption that this A board or board members are going to have to ask for levied money. I mean, it's, the way the legislators are designing it, they want the taxpayers to have a choice. So you, we're going to at some point in time in the next 10 years, going to have to ask. I mean, it's been 25-plus years since we've had permanent improvement money, you know, and I, and that's just for buildings, and we're pushing well over 22 years for operational money. I mean, it's, and that's great. So I do, I think this district has been very fiscally responsible for the last 20-some years, 100%. It's, it's, you know, but it, do, what I say that, you know, at the end of the day, you call it what it is, it's taxpayer money. If taxes would drop in the triennial, we're going to, we would get less anyways. And, you know, based on House Bill 186. Now, I'm staying on 20 mil floor? No. But, you know, based on up until 20 mil floor, we were, our, our property taxes that came in were very dependent on, you know, if they would go up or down. And obviously, they, of course, they have increased, but there's a good speculation in the next triennial, you're not going to see anywhere near that increase. It may even, it may possibly decrease.
Second question. Because it's a forecast, is there a percentage that Ryan calculates in for anticipated retirements? Is it possible to even do that?
No, he asks every year, you know, what we would possibly anticipate for retirements, and then what we would, he would ask me what I would choose to replace. So like last year, I could say I was, gave the example that we were able to, three, four, I don't have the exact numbers, I don't have them in front of me, teachers that we weren't going to replace.
Okay.
So those savings are zeros plus their benefits. But I, I can think of multiple...
I'm just asking.
I'm thinking four or five teachers right now that plan on retiring this year because STRS changed it to the 32 mark. But I don't know right now off the top of my head if those are positions that you can afford for that. So, yeah.
I'm just asking if we build that into the forecast.
It is sometimes.
Okay.
So, yeah. So he'll anticipate and ask those questions like, hey, are you planning on making any cuts this year? Are you status quo on the classified and certified side?
Got it. Okay. That was my question.
Okay. Are we good?
I, I, obviously, if you have more questions tomorrow for Bob and I for the board meetings, we do have to have this approved tomorrow due to the new change in the law for October. Everything he kind of had slide-wise is in your folder stapled.
Yep.
In that. So take that, take that back home and take a look through that. We can always come back. It is a work session if you guys want to talk, something comes up from a question. Okay. Moving on, I want to take the next probably X amount of minutes, as long as it takes, to, obviously, twice a year, we have to present to you guys a policy. So Ed Holland kind of says here, the list of policies that he feels either by law have to come up and be board adopted or changed, or they're just general, they're outdated, and he has a chance to go through them. So in there, I gave you, obviously, the list of policies is on the second page of your agenda, and then I gave you like a, basically, a overview of each one. And then I'm going to go through each one, just as, as a brief, and kind of give you what he said is either law or something worth a discussion point. All right? So the, the first one is policy 2266, which is nondiscrimination of the basis of sex at education programs or activities. It kind of then gives you, you can, if you choose to read each couple paragraphs, that's a synopsis of the policy. He said this is law, is why it's being brought up. And the reason why is, he said Trump wanted to remove specific verbiage, which is why that is law. That was exactly the notes on that. So there's not anything, if you wish to read through that, and you have a month. So I'm just going to give this to you as a work session to talk. It'll only be on a read tomorrow night. You have 30 days. If you want anything from me or Ed, as always, please tell us. The next one's 2430.02. That's participation in community stem cell, home education, extracurriculars. It's just removing a piece of the language under House Bill 96. It's, again, it's a law. It's just House Bill 96. It's a, it's a law change. Policy 2431, under interscholastic athletics, is also a law under House Bill 96. Policy 3130, assignment and transfers, is also a law. It's just a legal change. Policy 5130, withdrawal from school, is also a law. Policy 5136, personal communication devices, under House Bill 96, also a law. Okay? And that's probably the, the, the most hot-button one right now. That would be your cell phones. Okay?
Yeah.
That's the one that the Jane Timken bill, that was her big push. It was basically no cell phones K through 12. So how they define instructional day is, gives some wiggle room. So we're following exactly what the law is. So right now, currently, the way our language will read, we're abiding by the law. Okay? Because we don't, you know, we're already at the high, K8, there is no cellphone. High school, there is no cellphone on the instructional part of the day, our court classes, things like that. And then obviously, they are allowed for specific things based in the law when they can or can't use it. So Ed verified we're good, but that's probably the biggest one that's on there. Any questions, please ask. 5200 attendance, that's the law. That's all House Bill 96. Policy 5223, release time for religious instruction, also law. Policy 5410, promotion of academic acceleration placement, again, law under House Bill 96. Policy 6109 is new. That is just acceptance of payment by credit card. That just basically means that we have a policy that we would accept credit card for payment for various things. Could be school fees, you name it, different things like that. That's, that's just an option in there. Policy 6152 is a technical correction. You're adding the term Department of Education and workforce, which is why that's, Policy 6152 is even in there. It's a technical term change. Policy 6830, audit is law under House Bill 96. Policy 7540.02, digital content and accessibility is law. So basically, we have to have a, it's for Americans Disability Act, closed captions. So like I gave the example, we do, this is on YouTube right now. So obviously, we have to be able to have it in a closed captions option, which YouTube offers under that. Policy 7541 is just a, it's kind of, it's a delete and rescind. So it kind of goes together with policy 8380, or, sorry, policy 8305. Basically, it's, that's the information security is law under House Bill 96, which is basically deleting or rescinding Policy 7541. So these are the cybersecurity stuff, the things that we got to be aware of. Policy 8400, school safety, this is law. So this is more or less the suicide, the suicide prevention. We have to be able to have 988. So we have this on our website, but if students have planners and things such as, we had to make sure that's in their, in or on their planners. So like if our middle school has planners, our elementaries have planners, we basically have to purchase stickers and make sure they're on, on there from the mental health side of things. Twist over, policy 8462, is student abuse and neglect. That's law. Policy 8640, transportation for non-routine trips, that's also law. And policy 9270, equivalent education outside of schools and participation in extracurriculars for students not enrolled in our district is also law. Let me go to the next ones here.
Is that the one that says that, that it is, that homeschool kids are, were required to allow them to participate?
That, and...
Extracurricular activity?
Yes. And...
Okay, good.
Homeschool special education, students may participate in junior reserve officer training corps without being enrolled in the district. Also eligible people from the John Peterson or Austinism scholarships. They just kind of expanded it.
Okay.
You know, from that aspect of it, which you can read through on that end.
Okay.
Also, under there then, we have the nondiscrimination revisions. That's the second, the second page there, which is the bylaws and policies. So it's policy 1422, 3122, and 4122. Those are, those are replacement policies for nondiscrimination, equal employment opportunity, and anti-harassment. The policies of 1422.02.31, 2202, and 4122, nondiscrimination based on genetic information of employee is being deleted or rescinded. They're just replacing them, same as above. They're taking those policies and putting them under 2260, 2260.01. And then in policy 1623, 3123, and 4123, that's a technical correction for 504 and ADA prohibition against disability. We need to make sure we have names for people to go to if they have an issue, and that would obviously be Nick and Renee in that aspect. So their names have to be added. The last, these came out after. So we, you know, he was here in March, and then he had, he sends out updates, and this was, this also needed to be sometime between that, after that March meeting. But the student supervision and welfare, the 1613, 3313, and 4313 is law. That has to be put in there. Return the page. We have a revised policy under special education, which is also law. That's just stu, it's all about student supervision. These are just things that are in law when it comes to student supervision. So I put the full policies in there because they did, they didn't have the, the paragraph form. So I just copied the full policies in there and what we're looking at.
I'm not seeing any of those.
So it'll say March 25, legal update in one of the...
Ah, I got you. I'm with you now. Cut it. Sorry.
So usually, we can give you, we can give you a brief update. Ed can put together paragraphs with that. And then I kind of just went, and when we went through it, it was just which were law, which is just an option for like a discussion piece, and wanted to have that. Again, these are just on for first read tomorrow night. So please look those over. Please let me or Bob know any concerns or questions with that, and we'll happily get those responded to you quickly. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Someone, second.
That's quick.
Well, Mark and Jonathan?
I'll second.
Oh, you'll second? Whatever. Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Right. Thank you.